...Boone, Canton and Campbell Counties. And all you do, I'm not going to do this because it would be just wasting it if I do it. You peel this top off, you open up the bag, the directions are on the back, you fill it halfway up with water, you put your drugs in there, you seal it, and you can throw it away in the garbage. It's biodegradable. So you don't have to worry about... I know there for a while we had the pill boxes, you know, where you bring them from spring and you drop off your unused medication and stuff. But all I can do is tell you what they told us today. I don't know. All I can do is read the back. It just says, "Place unused medicine in the pouch, fill halfway with warm water, wait 30 seconds, seal and gently shake the pouch and dispose of it in the normal trash."
Are they free?
I believe they are, yes.
And you can get them at nursing homes and where?
No, no. At Kroger and the senior centers in Boone, Canton and Campbell. And then our next thing with the spring coming on and prom time is sticker shock. And that has to do with, it's called sticker shock, but at Canton County Alliance, we just call it sticker the liquor because it sounds a lot more catchy. And this is one of the stickers. And we go to all the businesses in Erlanger. Judy Bauer is a volunteer here with Volunteer Group. So Judy and I are going to do, I think it's like 10 businesses in Erlanger. We go in, we tell them that we're going to sticker their liquor. They recognize us now. And when we go in, they'll say, "Oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead and do it." So what it involves is you put the sticker on the 12-packs, 24-packs. It's mostly multiple packs. You can't cover up a barcode, you can't cover up their logo. And that's why these curves with the badge look so good, because a lot of times we put that right around the writing so we don't obliterate it. And it stands out because it's this color. And the only one that, we only had one that just said that they don't want to participate. But this is for the benefit of even the store owners themselves. Because if that's on there, it basically says you're not allowed, you are not allowed to buy liquor for minors. You can get in trouble.
What does it say, Renee?
Providing alcohol to minors is illegal. Fines are up to $500 and/or up to one year in jail.
Okay.
And then it says Canton County Alliance, and it gives the website for Canton County Alliance.
Okay.
And we have actually, this year then, we actually have like thank you notes to give them when we leave. And we have actually left extra stickers for some of the places. They'll say, "If you'll leave us some stickers when we run out of what we have, we'll sticker it for you." And we leave our name and number, and then they can call and do that. And it was one of the places that some, it wasn't one in Erlanger. Somebody had gone, they said when they went back to sticker the liquor again, I guess they still had packages that had the stickers on them. So I guess it was pretty effective because nobody was buying them. But that must have been a really, that must have been a really small store.
That's funny.
Were there a lot of minors that lived around there?
That is funny.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you done?
Yes, yes, I'm finished.
Chief Wilson, do we still have the box where people can bring medications?
Yes.
Okay, so that you still...
We intend to be on weekly basis.
Okay.
About 100 to 150 pounds a month.
Wow. I wish, I had no idea.
No kidding.
And I don't think this was meant to take the place of that. I think it was just a different alternative, you know?
So it's nice to have two options.
Yes, yes.
Oh, Renee, if you don't mind if I ask, okay, so the next meeting will be May 2nd. And what time are the Alliance meetings?
Noon to 2:00.
Okay.
And sometimes we have food.
Oh, okay. Where do you meet?
Canton County Library.
Okay.
We used to meet at the Tishner Inser Building. But we kind of grew out of that. I think we had 15 people today, plus Lisa Anglin and...
Great.
A couple of her other staff helpers.
Free food.
All right. Yeah, was it the free food, the room? I'm just kidding. You don't need to answer that.
Oh, no, it was good food. It was Chick-fil-A.
Are there any other reports from representatives this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reports of city operations. First, we've got the city engineer, Mr. Beaux.
Yes, sir. Indicated we're moving forward with Nelson Road sidewalk. The contractor's on the job. He's been there for over a week. And we're probably 30 to 40 percent completed with the sidewalk. I would expect that that will be completed in the next couple of weeks. We even have some coverage on Facebook. Some people indicated how thrilled they are with it. That's good. The contractor's got his equipment on Erlanger Road between Hubbard Avenue and Baker Street, ready to start right away. As I mentioned earlier, the Water District finished their part of the work, so we're ready to go. It turned out that contractor is going to be the low bidder on one we're going to present you tonight. And he intends to do that street at the same time. So we're going to get two streets done in the next six weeks. That would be Birch Avenue, first phase. The next one is that we're going to take bids on tonight is the Erlanger Underpass Project. If you recall, the railroad said stay off the steel. We don't want you touching a bridge. However, we had money budgeted, so we all had agreed that we wanted to improve the safety down there for the sidewalk, the pedestrian crossing Erlanger Road, and other improvements, including beautification, which includes some landscaping. We're taking bids that, we took bids yesterday. The project includes, well, I've got ahead of myself. Mark was able to talk to the railroad. The railroad was receptive to us building a serpentine sidewalk to allow the pedestrians to climb the hill on a reasonable rate to get up to Crescent Avenue. The reason we wanted to go to Crescent Avenue is we wanted to cross the intersection of Crescent Avenue to Erlanger Road. And then we want to have Erlanger Road crossing away from the intersection. We're going to put a stop sign there. And we're going to allow for the handicapped access for the people that are on Crescent Avenue or Erlanger Road that currently can't get to the bus stop without climbing steps. We're going to put a handicap ramp next to the veterinarian. We're going to rebuild the entire sidewalk around the veterinarian building, including the pavers on Dixie Highway. So part of the block will be completed like the rest of the highway up to McGowan-Pend As I mentioned before, the access up from the underpass won't be ADA, but this will allow ADA handicapped people to get to the bus stop and can use the other side of the highway. So we no longer will have pedestrian traffic crossing Erlanger Road at the intersection where we have the traffic issue.
That's awesome.
We also are changing the island there and making it right in and right out only. So you won't no longer have traffic sitting in the highway going the northbound direction trying to turn left.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Wonderful.
The entire sidewalk and steps around the veterinarian building are going to be replaced. The sidewalk that's along the highway will be removed, and that will be turned into a landscaped island. And the area on the railroad where we're bringing the serpentine sidewalk is going to be landscaped also. That's all part of the project. Now, the mayor has been attempting to convince the Highway Department of some responsibility for the sidewalks under the underpass. But they finally said that they don't agree with us, that they don't have any responsibility for sidewalks, they only maintain curb to curb. In the project we bid yesterday, there are items in there for concrete sidewalk. There are also items in there, unit prices for drainage. I suggested to the mayor, city manager, and the Public Works Department after we proceeded the bids yesterday, that since we still have money, we ought to go on and cure the problem under the underpass and solve the drainage problem down there. At the same time, because the contractor will be doing the same traffic management on Dixie Highway, while they're there with the equipment, that's the time to do it.
Oh, yeah. Great.
Everybody what talked to was in agreement with it. So tonight, when I ask you to ward the contract, it will also include a change order to include the sidewalks under the underpass. Everybody got clear on that?
Sweet.
Good. Now, the next projects we're going to be doing, it'll start after July 1. We're actually going to text the bids in June, be ahead of the game. We're going to be taking bids on Perimeter Drive, Phase 1. The Water District is taking their bids tomorrow to get the water main relocated like the Erlanger Road to get it out of the way. The Water District is also in the process of getting permission from the state to replace the water main on Riggs Avenue and the block of Erlanger Road from Baker Street to Riggs Avenue. So as soon as that's out of the way, we're going to be taking bids on the completion of new pavement on Riggs and the next block of Erlanger Road. And we're also going to be taking bids on the next phase of Woodland Hills. So those are the ones that are in the mail. The Water District is planning their work, and they're trying to stay ahead of us. There are some other streets that we're going to be doing later in the year that they need to do some water main relocation on. So I guess with that, that's all I have to report. We'll be receiving or presenting these bids for Birch and Underpass a little later in the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beaux.
Quick question.
Got a question.
When do you think that we'd be starting the underpass, that, all that work?
When are they going to start? If we pass this tonight, and the Highway Department has indicated the permits in the mail, the contractor's ready to start.
ASAP, okay.
You don't want it to start right away?
No, I said that'll be ASAP, yeah.
How long will it take?
It'll probably be, I'm going to take a guess, at about a six-week project.
Oh, I thought it'd be more than that. Will it shut down a lane at each time, like one section?
We're probably going to be restricting the use of the intersection there at different periods while we're building the island for the right in and right out, and also some of the curb replacement on Dixie Highway along with the beginning of the sidewalk. The sidewalk, we're going to back down toward the underpass where the wall is and remove a section of that wall and relocate it so the curb in the sidewalk is not going to come all the way to the intersection. It will wind up through the railroad property to the intersection of Crescent Avenue and Erlanger Road. So it won't be next to the street.
Oh, it sounds fabulous.
It'd be, well, I'll extend that a little further. We're actually going to put an area in front of the veterinarian building overlooking the underpass, assuming we're going to do the murals and all the rest of this stuff in the future. There's going to be a place there for a bench and a boulevard light to sit there if somebody wants to look at the mural or watch the trains. And there's going to be two pull-off areas on the winding trail up the hill where we can put benches.
Woo-hoo. Yeah. That's fabulous, Jim.
Yeah, it does. Mr. Beaux, if you wouldn't mind reminding me, I know we talked about two different ways of trying to collect the drainage, you know, that kind of seeps across and the mud that collects.
You want me to explain how we're going to do it?
Well, I guess maybe not. Maybe we can talk about that after the meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Never ask an engineer how a watch works.
We're putting drain, we're going to put drains against the wall, so any, anything that comes from above or through the wall is going to be collected and taken in the storm sewer.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, so we'll move on to the city attorney, Mr. Gallin.
I don't think I'll get an applause at the end of my report.
Never know.
We do have quite a bit of legislation on this evening, so I just want to kind of briefly go over some of that. The first is the second reading of two consensual annexation ordinances that we've discussed. The first is the Erlanger Lions Club property that the Lions Club, as you recall, came to us. They wanted to enter into the city of Erlanger. So this is a consensual annexation of their 23.977 acres. That portion that is only within the unincorporated area of Boone that is not in Florence, there's actually about a half acre that is in Florence. We are not annexing that, obviously. And the second annexation was property that was owned by the city, about seven acres that is attached to the ordinance. And you've confused me here. I have two of the same here. Just interesting trivia on this, you know, it might be Erlanger's first flag planted, so to speak, in Boone County, but we are not the only northern Kentucky city that is in two counties. Mr. Wickman and I had some interesting discussions with Kentucky Listserve just to see what other cities are out there. And believe it or not, we will be the 14th city in Kentucky that will cross two county lines.
Wow.
And I think that's kind of cool. It's kind of interesting. If anyone's curious in those cities, you can get with me at the end of the meeting. Obviously, the most common one around here is Walton, and they first changed county lines in the mid-'90s. The second, or the third ordinance that is in front of you is the cleanup work, so to speak, of repealing that portion of the ordinance and that portion of the code that shifted the burden and responsibility of sidewalk maintenance to the property owner. Because of the sidewalk survey and the work that the city is going to be doing to improve sidewalks throughout the city, we felt it necessary to repeal that ordinance that pushed that burden to the property owner. And then there's several municipal orders. I think these all have been talked about. The first municipal order is entering a lease for the Public Works Department building. The second one is the municipal order as it relates to renewing our current contract with Republic Services. And the final resolution, or the next resolution, has to do with the Tiff District in executing the development agreement with Almere. We've talked about that. We talked about the last committee meeting. There are representatives here from Almere, if anyone has any questions on that. This is just the first phase of this. This is merely just a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the development agreement, which then begins the process. And then there will be a series of ordinances and a series of things that we'll be doing probably every two to four weeks going forward, right, Jim? It'll start moving pretty fast. The next resolution is for the mayor to enter into the service agreement with eCivis. And this is just the software that is used for tools in writing successful grants. And the final resolution is, again, sort of a cleanup resolution. It is just renewing the Municipal Road Aid Cooperative Program Agreement for 2017. And the funds this year allocated to Erlanger are $357,253. So that is it for my report.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the city council attorney, Mr. Wickman.
I don't have anything to report, ma'am.
All right. Then we'll go on to the city administrator, Mr. Fields.
Yes, sir. Follow up on Mr. Gallin was talking about with the resolution for eCivis, I just wanted you all to know what that was. It's about $5,400 a year. However, over the past, we've used them to apply for about $3.1 million in grants. We have received about $2.1 million, a little over $2.1 million. We still have about $945,000 pending out there that we're waiting to hear back from of whether or not we're getting. The whole thing, we've only been denied $83,000 so far out of the three-point-something million that we've applied for. So the $5,400 a year using eCivis is a very good bargain for us. So if anybody was wondering what that was. The railroad will be here, the railroad representative from the property will be here at our next committee meeting.
Oh, my.
He's coming into town, and I asked him to come to the meeting, so he'll be here. If anybody would like to ask him any questions about the leases or anything, he'll be, he'll be here that night to answer any questions that we may have. And the resolution to sign the agreement for this next three years, we all know what the building facilities came back as. We can't do anything, this thing runs out in May, it runs out May 1st. So we need, it's really imperative that we get it signed and get it sent back to them before he actually, you know, comes here. Sherry and I are going to get that mailed out as soon as we can. Do that and lock that up for these three years while we're making some decisions whether or not we want to move forward with that property. Also, on that night, I would like to have a personnel policy discussion and present all the updates to you all to look at, to have a month or so to digest those of what we're suggesting, some of the changes that we've made. And we will adopt those hopefully by resolution. I do know that we have to do the new salary band, and we have to do the numbers of people in those positions and get it down. We have to do that by ordinance, so that's something that I'll have ready that night for the attorneys to look at and see going forward. Those have to be adopted by ordinance, I believe, Mr. Wickman, and is in the past. And I think that has to be done right around July or somewhere. So we'll have that ready just to present to you all at the next committee meeting so you can look at it and see how all those new positions are. The FART Department restructuring, some of that will be in there. Should be brief because I know we've got a lot on that night's meeting. I just sent you all an email. I will be leaving tomorrow morning. I'll be back next Monday. If you need anything, Mr. Hahn is your man. Feel free to call him. 24/7, he said today when I was talking to him.
Right.
So, thank you, that's all.
All right. All right, you've heard the reports of the representatives and city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Sudcamp, second by Mrs. Cow. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Were you guys saying that I don't ever look over this way? You're right. I don't, I didn't, not on purpose, I swear. All right, next up on the agenda is our correspondence. Is there any correspondence to review this evening? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. Then we've got citizen and public comments. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening? Got a couple people on the list.
Yeah.
Serena.
I'm glad I have a jacket because I'm cold.
I think she has, she's already left. Okay. Okay, then next we've got Mr. Gary Meyer.
I'll ask him.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that didn't get a chance to put their name on the list? All right, then we'll move on to bids.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Beaux, yeah, thank you.
First one is the Dixie Highway Erlanger Road sidewalk. You have in front of you very, like, seven pages. You can thumb through those a little later and see all the items, including landscaping, demolition, and all the rest of the stuff. But if you turn to the last page, we had two bidders. TMS Construction Incorporated, $207,747.70. Second bidder was Paul Michaels and Sons Incorporated, $227,755.75. If you go back to the front page, you'll notice at the bottom of the note, the contractor was almost $7,000 under my estimate that I made after I made the quantity sheet. So that's good. And you'll notice that the total cost of the project is considerably more, less than we currently have budgeted for the work up there. So I would like for you to, someone make a motion to award the work to TMS Construction Company, including a change order to include the sidewalks on both sides of the highway under the underpass, based on the fact that the unit price that we have in the contract here for sidewalks and the drainage is in there. So we, he has already bid a unit price item, so it's just a matter of adding and developing a change order for the additional work.
Go move.
All right, motion by Mrs. Sudcamp. I saw, I think I saw Mrs. Pitts hand first, second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
The second project is Phase 1 of Birch Drive. Birch Drive comes off as Division Street and includes the first cul-de-sac, which we're going to remove the center of that cul-de-sac and make it a solid cul-de-sac, since nobody seems to want to maintain that anymore. I think we've had that occur in other places in the city. If you'll go to the third sheet, we had a bunch of bidders here. If you go to the third sheet, the low bidder was JPS Construction at $160,972.50. The next bidder was Ben Turlock Construction LLC at $175,152.50. Third bidder was TMS Construction at $176,537. If you turn to page four, next bidder was Straight Edge Construction LLC, who's currently doing our sidewalk on Nelson Road, at $176,735 even. Next bidder was M&amp;W Construction Excavation Company Incorporated at $189,240. And last was Paul Michaels and Sons Incorporated at $201,730. If you go back to the first page, fortunately, TM, JPS is doing the work on Erlanger Road, and they happen to be in town right now, so they gave us a heckler price. If you'll notice down to note, at the bottom there, its estimate is cost is $65,317.46 under my estimate.
Wow.
So that bore the page for some of the work up on the highway. I recommend you award the work to JPS Construction.
They have you.
We've got a motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I will point out that both contractors just happened to be looking for work today. JPS is the contractor that's down in Edgewood doing the large project down there, and there was a delay of them starting up again, so he was ready to work Erlanger Road, and therefore he could do Birch at the same time.
Sweet.
Wonderful.
That's all I have, sir.
Man, you ought to go to Vegas.
All right.
He is.
We'll move on. Is there any other old business to discuss this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Does anybody have any new business to discuss this evening? Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Sudcamp.
While Officer Scroggins is in the house, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I heard that the Explorers are going to have a trivia night. Yes, please.
He's a quick learner.
City Council has been invited to take part in this.
Thank you. Yeah, the Explorers, we've been hosting a trivia night the last couple of years. This will be our third consecutive year. We invite anybody to join, you know, sponsor a team and really help us out. This is a main fundraiser that we complete every year to, you know, help pay for our competitions that we go after every year. And we're hoping to maybe this 2018, see a national competition for our kids that have been working really hard. Trivia night is May 6. I do have some forms I can get to you if anyone is interested in sponsoring a table or just joining in as an individual, and we'll find somewhere to, my team to put you in. $100 a table is what we ask for. We also accept any kind of donations for a silent auction every day. So, May 6, we've got flyers floating around everywhere if you're interested.
I could hail that.
It's going to be at the Edgewood Senior Center. We're looking at between, I believe it's 6:00 PM to roughly 10:00 PM.
How many people per table?
Roughly 10 per table.
Oh, that's a person, yeah. I think it sounds like fun.
Yeah, I think so, too.
The more the merrier. Unfortunately, our usual emcee, he has sought other avenues in his career, will not be able to emcee the event, so I'm going to be taking over this year.
Oh.
I did used to run a DJ service, so being in front of a microphone is, you know, not strange to me. It's a little outdated, I think, but I, this is good practice. I'll break back in.
There you go.
All right. Any other questions?
Wonderful, thank you.
Along those notes, I think you'll do just fine replacing TJ. Last couple of years, we've done this. The administration's got a team together and participated in this. I will say this, Mr. Cahill gets a team. He's not here tonight. Mr. Cahill's team is a really good team. They usually end up winning it. I'm not going to tell you where we come in every year. But it is, it is a fun night to come and do that. So, but be prepared for competition because there are some people, Mr. Cahill, that takes it really serious.
He was the first person I thought of when I was invited to come.
Well, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
One other thing, I really miss our flag at Commonwealth in Dixie, our huge American flag.
Isn't that put up by the vets?
No, no. City puts that up. And I, I think, I think Rod needs...
In front of the factory?
Uh-huh.
Rod has a new flag order.
Okay.
It should be going out soon.
Sweet.
We take it down in the winter time because of the weather.
Right, right, okay.
Actually, Rod?
Hey, Rod.
Yeah, usually first to me I put it up because it looks nice for the Memorial Day weekend.
Okay, sweetie, thank you. I've just missed it, okay.
It is a beautiful flag.
Yeah, it's a beautiful flag. And just one more thing, and then I'll be out of your hair. I wanted to wish Tom Cahill Sr. the happiest of birthdays. That's why Kathy and Tom are not here. A miracle happened with that man because a year or so ago, we didn't think he would celebrate another birthday. So I just wanted to congratulate them on having their priorities in order and spending the evening with Dad.
All right, thank you, Patty. All right, any other new business? Seeing none, then we'll move on to legislation. The first is an ordinance regarding the annexation of the Lions Park. This is the second reading.
This is an ordinance annexing certain unincorporated territories within the county of Boone, Kentucky, and contiguous to the present boundary lines of the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, and defining by meets and bounds the territory annexed. By summary, this is a consensual annexation pursuant to KRS 81A412, and it is 23.977 acres, which is described in the attached plat. This is a second reading.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, or, excuse me, this is a roll call vote. I always do that.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nicely?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fettie?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next is an ordinance regarding the annexation of city property, another second reading.
An ordinance annexing certain unincorporated territories within the county of Boone, Kentucky, and contiguous to the present boundary lines of the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, and defining by meets and bounds the territory annexed. Again, by summary, this is a consensual annexation pursuant to KRS 81A.412. This is 7.597 acres, which is owned by the city of Erlanger. And the legal description in plat, which has been certified by the city engineer, is attached, showing that portion in unincorporated Boone County that will become a part of the city of Erlanger.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented or as read? Motion by Mrs. Cow, second by Mr. Montgomery. Any discussion? All in favor say, or, excuse me, another roll call vote.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fettie?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next is an ordinance regarding the sidewalk, first reading.
This is an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, repealing in its entirety ordinance number 2103 in the Erlanger Code of Ordinance, the sections 97.065 through section 97.069, all related to a property owner's obligation to repair sidewalks. By summary, the strike-through portions are to be deleted, underlying portions are to be added, as required by KRS 83A.060, and you can see that we have stricken through ordinance number 2103 in its entirety. And just to clarify something that I spoke with Mr. Fields earlier about, this does not in any way, this ordinance only dealt with shifting the burden of maintenance to property owners. There are still ordinances on the books and a part of the code which require somebody to maintain that right of way, keep it free of debris, things of that nature. So those ordinances are still active, alive, and well. This is a first reading.
All right, I asked the city clerk to please note in the minutes their first reading of this ordinance. Next up is a municipal order regarding the railroad lease for the Public Works Buildings.
It's a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Cincinnati, New Orleans, and Texas Pacific Railway Company for 87,120 square feet at milepost 10 in Erlanger and used by the Public Works Department. A copy of the lease is attached. It was discussed in Mr. Fields' report. This is a three-year lease, beginning June 1, 2017, and ending on midnight, May 31, 2020, and it is for the rental amount of $9,100 per year.
All right, do I entertain a motion to adopt this as read? Motion by Mrs. Sudcamp, second by Mrs. Fettie. Any discussion? All in favor say, or, Mr. Nicely?
Yes. How come you only got three years?
At this point, that's all that they're granting us.
Have you ever wondered why?
Yes, we have had those discussions with them.
What kind of answer do you give?
This is, and Mr. Fields, please correct me if I'm wrong or straighten me out if I'm going the wrong way here, but they, they've made the, they've started to make these decisions nationwide to shorten their lease agreements, no more long-term leases. It's something that we've kind of toiled with in the process of renegotiating this. Anything that you would like to add?
The only problem is, this is a switching yard. Did you ever think about maybe they're going to put more tracks in to switch more? And what's we're going to do with the public buildings?
It's a great question.
Is it something to start thinking about now?
Yeah, it's something that we should ask at the committee meeting when he's here. If there's any plans for that. Do you think they would share that with us if that was a plan?
I've asked that question, and they have no plans for that property, according to what they're telling me. They've got a nationwide policy now where they'll only do three-year leases with three extensions. So it's a total of nine years, two extensions, I'm sorry, nine years total. And that's just what they've done nationwide. And every piece of property and every new lease that comes up, that's what they're doing. I didn't mention the station, any use for, use for that property on that side. If they do anything, they've got the old Erlanger lumber on the other side. That's where that switching yard was, and that's where all of that is. Putting a switching yard down that hill and where those tracks are, kind of, I know, I'm not going to say it's impossible, but it makes more sense that it's going to go on the other side of that railroad underpass where the old Erlanger lumber building was, where all the flat land and the extra tracks are there now for that and what they do, so.
About both sides. Like, just one boat.
No, they have no plans. From what they've told me, they have no plans, but I don't have that in writing. It's their property. Yeah. Don't know.
Yeah, I know you had mentioned it as one of the things that you thought would be a good thing to work on. One of the goals for the city was to kind of move ourselves away from the dependence on the railroads. And I agree. I mean, this lease would be good for three years, and it's something that we certainly should keep in our, in our, all of our minds before we go and spend money and invest more money on other people's property. We ought to try to figure out how to release ourselves from that dependence.
They come along and say, hey, we've wanted three years. What are we going to do? The way they're switching over there, they're running out of room. They're doing more switching than they ever have because I think Queens Gate is getting overcrowded.
Yeah.
They come along and say, three years, what are you going to do? You don't make some kind of plans now.
Yeah, we'll have to relocate. We wouldn't have any choice.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I trust what you're saying. I mean, is anyone, you've got a front row seat to see that, what's happening there on a daily basis, and, you know, I trust you, you know what you're seeing there. So, yeah, it's certainly something that we need to be paying attention to. I appreciate you bringing it up. Okay. Okay to move on? All right. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second and some discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next item is a municipal order regarding the waste collection agreement renewal.
It's a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Republic Services for the exclusive use of the public streets and rights away of the city for the collection and disposal of all solid waste from property of the city and collectible solid waste from all residential collection units within the city. As has been discussed, this is renewing the current contract with Republic Services, which is attached.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt? Motion by Mr. Nicely, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is a resolution regarding the development agreement for Nyer Property.
This is a resolution order of the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor of the city to execute a development agreement with Almere LLC related to development of the Erlanger Commerce Center project. The development agreement is attached, and to kind of reiterate was what was discussed at the last committee meeting, this begins the process of the city creating a TIF whereby the incremental revenues, we would receive only 20% of the incremental revenues as it relates to the payroll tax and property taxes on the property. Attached to this development agreement, which was also just attached at the committee meeting, is Exhibit D, which is the infrastructure and site development costs. This development agreement caps the amount that would be paid into the TIF of $15,455,920, the TIF reimbursement cost, and it itemizes the infrastructure and site development costs that those would be going for. This is a 30-year development agreement, so whatever comes first is what will end this, whether it's the payment of the $15,455,920 or 30 years. Also, a slight change to the agreement that was put in front of you last time but not what was shown on the board is the, actually, the copy we have here doesn't have it, but the current Exhibit E has been modified with a slightly different pilot payment. It increased slightly from what was on here based on going from three buildings to two, and the current exhibit site plan, as what was shown at the committee meeting, shows two buildings instead of the three that was on this initial plan that is in front of us. So we need a motion approving this so that they can move forward.
Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mrs. Cow. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is a resolution regarding the East Civis agreement.
It's a resolution of the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor of the city to execute a master subscription and service agreement with East Civis Inc. relating to tools for writing successful grants. This is an agreement for three one-year cycles with a price of $5,367 per cycle. The agreement is attached.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt this? Motion by Mrs. Cow, second by Mrs. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And next is a resolution regarding the municipal road aid.
This is a resolution adopting and approving the execution of a municipal aid co-op program contract between the Incorporated City of Erlanger and the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, as provided in the Kentucky revised statutes, and accepting all streets referred to therein as bean streets, which are part of the Incorporated City. As discussed, this is this year's municipal aid road funds, and $357,253.74 has been apportioned.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt? Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mrs. Cow. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, I don't see anything else here on the agenda, so I'll ask for a motion that we adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Skidmore, second by Mrs. Pitts.